July 20th, 2015 order. We do have a quorum, let's please hand the flag to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All individuals are asked to either silence or turn off cell phones, pages, or other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Through the agenda, through the agenda as opposed in accordance with open meeting law, I here on place all agenda items on the table for discussion. What is the wish of the council? I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Mayor Zelka, second by Councilman Logregan to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Agenda is approved. Approval of the minutes, the copy of the minutes from the joint city council county commissioners meeting April 30th, 2015, special work session meeting July 6th, 2015, the regular meeting of July 6th, 2015 are enclosed. What is the wish of the council?
I move to accept the minutes. Second.
Motion by Councilman Canapah, second by Alderman Hercock to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries approval of the bills. Frank has gone tonight, so I can answer real quick. Anybody have any questions on page one? Page two? Page three? Page four?
I did on the refund upper payment. It's to Morrison County.
They remitted some tax from our tax settlement, they remitted some money to us that didn't belong to us, so we're just refunding it back.
Page five? Page six?
Page seven? I noticed that throughout we're seeing audit expenses, is there a total on the amount that we pay for auditing?
Thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and ten dollars, and that's for our agreement with them.
What's the wish of the council on approving checks number nine two one seven five through nine two two eight four totaling four hundred and ninety-three thousand one hundred and eighty-three dollars and twenty-two cents?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilman Logregan, second by Alderman Hercock to approve the bills. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Bills are approved. Awards, donations, presentations, and proclamations? Donations, emergency response trailer, Coke Pipeline? Brian Penner? Chief?
I'll do it, Brian. Council President, members of the council, earlier this evening you went out in the parking lot there and received a hazmat trailer from Coke Pipeline. I believe the cost of the trailer was around twenty-seven thousand dollars. Tonight we have Brett, Adam Fisher, and John Penner from Coke Pipeline. It's an asset for us to have a trailer, we do have one, it's a smaller trailer. It's not only for trains, it's for any hazmat bill that we might have in our area. We'll be able to take it to other communities too as well. It's kind of like on a mutual, I'll turn it over to Adam here, he can tell you what a lot of it is.
Hi, my name's Adam Fisher, I'm the operations supervisor based out of Little Falls Pump Station. Coke Pipeline Company is happy to have recently donated an emergency response trailer to Little Falls Fire Department for emergency response situations. The donation is valued at approximately twenty-seven thousand dollars. It includes boom, a drum skiver, pumps, generator, and related response equipment that'd be useful in an emergency response situation, especially the response that involves hazmat materials. This donation is part of our company's focus on being a good neighbor in the communities that we call home, including Little Falls. The firefighters here in Little Falls provide critical services, and we're pleased to be able to help them in a small way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Little Falls Fire Relief Association donation, equipment?
Mr. Mayor, council, as President of Little Falls Fire Relief Association, our members tonight that are here are Craig Seeland, Duane Dobell, Scott McKissa, Tim Tabit, and Mike Neiman. Through our fundraising efforts, we donated, we plan on donating tonight a sum of eleven thousand dollars to the city of Little Falls for the equipment that is on the new engine one truck that you see outside, from nozzles to hoses to blitzfires and numerous things that we wanted to donate to you. And I have a check that I'd like to present to Mayor Zelka. And thank you guys for all your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we need a motion to accept them?
You can, yes, they'll be included on a future donation resolution, but you can certainly do that this time as well.
I make that motion.
Second. Motion by Alderman Hercock, second by Councilman Hanson to accept the donation from Coke Pipeline and Little Falls Fire Fighter Relief Association. What is the wish of the council? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Donations are accepted, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Consent agenda, annual control report, June 2015, received. Fire department report, June 2015, received. Heritage Preservation Commission minutes, June 2015, received. Morrison County Chastity Agreement, approved. On sale Sunday and off sale liquor license, Scott Gregory, S E H, Inc., D B A Falls Bar, approved. On sale and Sunday liquor license, Janine Adder, Alderson, D B A Red Bull Bar, approved. Money Commission minutes, June 2015, received. Police Department report, June 2015, received. Public Works Department, June 2015, received. Solicitor's license, one year, Stephanie Homer and Carrie Baumann, D B A Charred Communications, approved. Presentation Judy Olson-Wells Golf Course, accept. Temporary sidewalk closing, sidewalk display and promotional permit, or promotion permit, gum drop tree, August 8th, 2015, approved. Temporary sidewalk closing, temporary roadway closing, and dance license, C H I St. Gabriel's Hospital, Live Better Live Longer, October 3rd, 2015, approved, authorized. Water treatment facility report, June 2015, received. What's the wish of the council on the consent agenda?
Mr. President, I make a motion, we accept, approve, receive, and authorize the items from the consent agenda. I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilman Hanson, and second by Councilman Canapah, to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? There's a question there on the temporary sidewalk roadway closing. C H I's ever shut down Highway 27 for seven blocks on Saturday afternoon from basically Black Road to Lumber Drive. It's kind of like a bad road to shut down in town to have a street dance for four hours.
That's what the proposal is for, yes, we do, they did prepare a detour plan going down Leavitt's Lemon Street or zip that and then back up Lumber Drive.
You go down the state highway?
The state has to approve it, and I think if you look, it will be sent to the state after the city approves it, then it goes to the state for their approval as well.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Consent agenda is approved. Public hearings and lettings, surplus property, correct?
Wednesday, July 15th, we opened bids for our surplus property that we had over at the street department there where it was being shown. We received thirty-three bids for various items, there's two items that we would like to remove from the list in terms of award tonight. It's item number ninety-four, the deer and lion costume, as well as item number ninety-five, the G M T Jimmy Sledge truck. I know Lori had a couple of them that were noted incorrectly in terms of the high bid on the list, but tonight we would like to reward the bids to the highlighted individuals that were declared surplus.
What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion, we accept the bids, less numbers ninety-four and ninety-five.
Got a second?
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Hanson, second by Alderman Hercock to approve the surplus property. Any discussion?
Real quick, on the, on the truck.
Yep.
Does it that, you think the bids aren't high enough, or?
Yeah, the tires on them are worth more than the bid. So if it's all separate and scrap truck, we get more than that.
Well, I want to make sure I do everything appropriate here. I can point you into some salvage bidders for this stuff, that I can, I want to make sure I do everything legal, but I'm confident I can, people I do business with would provide a blind bid, not sealed, but I can help you with an email to these individuals for a not coached bid. They'll look at the specs of the truck, some pictures, and shoot you a number, and you can choose to bring it back if you want to accept their bid then. If you're interested in that, these are people I know.
Any other discussion?
Just as an aside for the council's information, we did provide the items that were in the Dewey Barn, that were stored in the Dewey Barn. If you remember, we entered into a contract with Dave Miller Auctions. I did receive an email from him today, and that stuff is slated to go on his auction on August 6th, I believe it is, that Thursday. So the items that were in the Dewey Barn that we had will be up for auction on the 6th, and I believe he's advertising that in Morrison County Record as well.
Do you want to just make, double check, make sure on that?
Yep, I, I, yeah, I sent some of the emails.
The sale's over?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries change order number two, well selling, Northland Drilling Incorporated.
Did you may recall about a month ago when we talked about this at your work session, there were some remaining funds in our Department of Health grant for sealing various wells throughout our wellfield here right at City Hall, and so we went and explored sealing a well right across the street over by the water plant. Northland Drilling was the original contractor for the well sealing, and they honored their prices for sealing that well across the street. And so tonight, the change order number two is in the amount of one thousand seven hundred seventy-three dollars to seal the well across the street there. And that will be charged to the product, to the grant funds.
How much was left, or Brent, like?
I believe we're just over a little bit when we take into college staff time, I don't have an exact number, but it's between
Most of it though.
Zero to a thousand dollars is what we're at, yeah.
What's the wish of the council?
I'll make the motion to approve. Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Hanson, second by Mayor Zelka to approve change order number two. Any discussion? This really isn't an addition, it's to a project that they ordered bid, it's an addition to another project, basically.
Correct, yes.
Adding to the scope of work.
Adding to the scope of work.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries Planning Commission, recommendations, Public Works Director, conditional use permit, Roach Development LLC, accept?
Thank you, Mr. President, council members, the Planning Commission had two public hearings at its last meeting, and here are some other recommendations to you for both of them. First being the Roach Development LLC application for planning unit development, requires conditional use permit to have this approved. It's for eight single-story, four-plus residential buildings, probably rent it out, on an approximate eight-point-eight acre parcel. The recommendation from the Planning Commission was to approve this application, and there's a list of, you know, report there, there's a list of summary of the public input that was received as well as the findings of fact, the Planning Commission, in support of the recommendation. I recall that this was something that had come up previously in April, had come before the Planning Commission and council, denied at that time, and then there was a series of meetings between the applicant and the neighborhood, and the city's have involvement in that, and the result was this reapplication that comes up with a new recommendation.
What's the wish of the council? The conditional use permit? Got a motion for discussion?
So moved.
Got a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zelka, second by Councilman Logregan to accept that recommendation of the Planning Commission for the conditional use permit for Roach Development LLC. Discussion?
I have a few questions regarding this, and I just to go over these again, I was going with Ben and Greg regarding some issues on a phone call I received regarding the P U D, whether or not that goes all the way to the river. There was some misunderstanding, I think, on the map with the red part, that red part was, could you say floodplain?
Right, if you look at, in your packet, if you look in your packet, you'll see this exhibit here that has some agenda on it with an aerial formal behind it. The magenta is the hundred-year floodplain that's defined by Flood Insurance Master, or B M A. The aerial, or the area that's not included in that magenta is outside that hundred-year floodplain. As you can see, the property here in question is outside of that floodplain area.
Okay, another question Greg that I have for you was the, as part of the question whether or not the easement was part of the setback, and if that is legal to have easement as part of the setback, and I believe you said that Roach owns land?
Correct, for the most part in there, the property does jog up and down a bit, but for the most part, the Roach family does own up to that section line, and then the area just to the north of that one rod would be the easement area for the property just to the west. And so the developer, or Roach, does own that area, which would be included in that setback area.
And I'm not trying to take over, but I have one more question regarding the point that was brought up in the public comment portion regarding fair market value and their price. The discussion of the fact that it was going to be fair market, and there was some question of what fair market rental is at right now, and what the intention is, I believe you said, at or above is what they're going to be charging?
True, back in 2011, the city actually did a housing study, and they basically took a polling of the rental units that were out there currently. And what they found was for a two-bedroom house, the identified range is four hundred fifty to eight hundred and ten dollars. For a three-bedroom unit, it was eight hundred seventy-five to nine hundred dollars, with the prevailing range, the most likely area, was between six hundred fifty and eight hundred for a two-bedroom, and eight hundred seventy-five and nine hundred for a three-bedroom. So those are the prices that they saw most of the time when they were looking at pricing that was fair market within the city of Little Falls. Again, that was back in 2011, so that's five years ago. I would suspect those prices have gone up since then, so what they are exactly today, I can't say, but it's within that range there.
Any other discussion or questions?
Yes, so we received an email from Ben relative to the demand for removal for consideration. He had suggested that, well first off, as our attorney had a chance to review this completely?
I have.
And it's in within, it meets with approval?
Right, with conditional use, you by ordinance have set out what needs to occur for a developer or anybody else applying for a conditional use permit, what they need to meet to get it. Once they meet those conditions, then they're entitled to issuance of a conditional use permit. And it appears going through the conditional use requirements that every issue's been addressed, and they appear to meet every criteria. So it appears by all evidence here that they're entitled to a conditional use. If at some point in time the council decides they want to change, or they don't want to have developments in certain areas, the remedy for that is to change ordinance and remove conditional use options for certain developments, or certain zoning districts, or whatnot. But once you have it in the ordinance and that criteria is there, and an individual meets that, they're entitled to issuance of a conditional use permit.
So the concerns that were raised here are not valid?
I actually talked, dealt with the league, and went over that, and right after having those discussions, I'm recommending that you go forward and issue the conditional use permit, I think they've met the requisite criteria and have their entitlement to it.
I have a question for you as well regarding the same letter, and I'd ask it right over some of the information from the annexation with Bell Prairie and the agreement. And I don't find some of the terminology in that agreement that I find in that letter, except that was in that agreement. Are there other documents, or do you know where those are from?
Where are you tackled with respect to annexation?
Sorry, I've got to find words for that again.
Okay.
Alderman Hercock, if I may, are you looking at the one-hundred-foot setback area?
That, and it talked about point seven-five acres per structure.
That's part of our Mississippi corridor, it's like in the R two M, so a portion of the property is zoned in the Mississippi corridor. That's anything within five hundred feet of the Mississippi River. So that point seven-five is mentioned in our Mississippi corridor ordinance, as well as that hundred-foot setback designation. So a hundred feet back from the Mississippi River is the setback requirement, you can't build a house within that hundred-foot corridor to the high water mark, as well as reference to that point seven-five within that, within that five hundred-foot corridor.
So that applies to that one corner?
It applies to that one corner, but that one corner is beyond a hundred feet from the ordinary high water. It still applies with the point seven-five acres per unit for principal structure, but in terms of the hundred feet, they're well beyond that partial bit.
Another question I have is Mr. Smith's attorney at their last meeting cited three exhibits that she highlighted here as far as, I just want to get this straight, what we're filing for is a C U P and not a rezoning?
Correct.
Two different, two different things, correct?
Two very different things, correct.
So even though, so if we give the permit, it's not changing the zoning of the area that they're building in, correct?
Correct, if you rezone, you're asking to either be able to do more than what's allowed in the current zoning, or less. You're either asking for it to be restricted back to a lower zoning level, or a higher one. With a conditional use permit, you've already set out the criteria for what's allowed, and it's simply a matter of have they met, you know, in their application, the requisite criteria to be granted them. So the C U P criteria is set out in ordinance, if they meet it, they're entitled to it. With a rezone, you're actually asking to either increase what's allowed for, or decrease what's allowed for as far as structures and uses. So there are two very distinct and different concepts.
And the second question I have is a letter from the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources. This was dated to Mayor Van Brisingham back in 2013, that evidently had no action taken on. I guess I want to make sure that all of our ducks are in a row, and all of our Ts are crossed, and everything is up front before we, you know, proceed with this. I mean, I don't, I don't want this to come out and bite me in the butt a little later on.
Right.
Sam, so is that something that we need to take care of before?
No, not if, I believe Greg and Ben both have checked into are we in the floodplain or aren't we? Are we compliant with that or aren't we, and I believe they've concluded that we are.
And in addition to that, if I may Tony, we referenced the entire nineteen eighty study, not just specific panels within the city of Little Falls. So we have them included there, we referenced the entire nineteen eighty study that they're referencing here, so that's all included in our ordinance already just by saying the nineteen eighty ordinance for, or nineteen eighty study that was done from Morrison County.
I have one other question. One of the neighbors across the road on DeRozier stopped to see me at work, tell me that he and others were in, I don't know if he said, not endorsing the idea, but in agreement with what was being proposed, with some changes that the Roaches had agreed to? Is that reflected in our conditional use permit application?
Yeah, the fourteen conditions that were pulled together were included in the Planning Commission packet, and those are the fourteen conditions that were put onto, those are the fourteen conditions recommended to the council to be put on the conditional use permit. So if the council goes along with the recommendation for the Planning Commission, those fourteen conditions would be included in that as well, unless the council changes one or anything like that, but right now those fourteen are included in there.
Thank you.
With the discussions that they had with the neighbors, now I'm just trying to remember back here, that most of the discussions that came up with the conditions that the neighbors agreed upon were with neighbors basically to the north of DeRozier Drive?
Most of them, yes.
Yes.
Were there, were there any members or neighbors or whoever on the south end of that property at that negotiation meeting?
At the discussion table, at the time, there were some from the south as well, but mainly predominantly from the north, just because there are more neighbors on the north side than there are on the south side.
True, but the neighbors on the north should be treated the same as the neighbors on the south also, I would assume.
No doubt.
You know, as far as setbacks and stuff like that.
If you, if you look at the city's ordinance in terms of the various zoning districts, normally the front yard setbacks are greater than the backyard setbacks. You can, you can change those and adjust those in terms of the conditional use as you want to, so that's a recommendation that the Planning Commission had in terms of the fifty-foot on the public rights away, forty feet on all other property lines. If you want to make them equal, you definitely can, those conditions are more restrictive than what the zoning ordinance currently has, but typically in the zoning areas But typically in the zoning areas, the front yard is greater than the backyard, or side yards.
Greg, would the setbacks with the duplexes be more than they are with the fourplexes?
Maybe less, considerably less. I actually wrote that down here. Rear yard setback in the R1C district is a minimum 10 feet. And the front yard setback is a minimum 20 feet. So the proposal is for front yard of 50 feet and rear yard of 40 feet from the planning commission.
Well, I guess I have a question for everybody on staff, and that is, Dan recommended tabling this for another two weeks to make sure everything was tight. You know, I would like to defer to a guy's recommendation that has that kind of experience. Are we confident that we've covered every corner of this, every question, issue? Biggest thing paid for the city attorney, which was the recommendation for the tabling it, but...
Right, and I think that came for me because I was gone all of last week and I got those emails and I had no ability to do research except standing out in the middle of a dirt road with my iPad. So I called them and I said, "I don't know if I'm going to be able to get a hold of the league. I don't know what input they'd be able to give or not be able to give." And I was kind of hanging there. So I told them, "I don't know on Monday that I will be able to address this or not." So after talking with the league and going over everything, like I said in talking with the league, it appears, my opinion is, they've met everything they need to meet. It sets out very clearly what the planning commission needs to address, what the developer needs to address. Once they've met those, they're entitled to the CUP. So is that ironclad 100% never ever ever to have a problem? Of course not, but in looking at this, it appears that the Ts have been crossed, the Is have been dotted, and it appears that they're entitled to this.
And if I might add, Dan's email did state that Tony would not have time to do research. And so I think, I can't speak for him, nobody can, but I think it was made on the premise that he would not have time.
I called him.
Yeah, if that was the case, he would have said so.
Right, I called him when I was on vacation and then he said, "Well, okay, I will do an email out then indicate you that." So that came for me, so I think that was strictly because of what I indicated. I didn't know what Monday would ring. I had to be important on Friday this afternoon, so I just didn't know in that amount of time what contact I'd be able to make and what I'd be able to do. But at this point in time, it appears they've done everything that they need to do to have this granted.
I spent a little bit of time visiting with the people on this issue. And I keep hearing, even in this document, that there is less opposition to this project. I've not seen that. I have seen negative resignation, not positive consensus. And I believe that there is a good solution out there. I am not opposed to construction. I taught it in school for years, and I believe that our community should step forward. But I also know that because something might be legal doesn't mean that it's going to build a harmonious community. I believe that there is a good solution out there, but I believe that it is out in the future as opposed to today. I think that if we let this sit for a while, I think next year at this time we look at this, there can be all kinds of possibilities that will work out very well. And I think that things would be fine. But I believe at this point, it's too soon for us to make this decision to go forward with this project, and I am still opposed to it.
Well, I know we've been coming back and back to this, you know, and I know there are a lot of questions regarding that. And I just, for my own clarification, again, if the Roaches decided to plot the land out and build duplexes, my assumption is they could build 18 duplexes or 36 units there, right?
That's correct, yes.
And that 4.1 units per acre.
If that's what it works out.
That's what it says in here, yeah. And then if they put in the fourplexes, which would be 31 units per 8.8 acres, and that's at 3.5 dwelling units per acre, correct?
True.
And the density is basically at 1 to 3 units per acre. So they're half a unit over, basically.
Then what our compliance shows is correct.
Okay. I know some of the people are comments that I've heard of, you know, the density of it and where these houses and where they're going to be placed and stuff. And I realize that you bought the property, you want to build it, and you want to maximize, you know, the profit out of there. But, you know, I just think in here, you know, possibility of like, you know, two duplexes and six fourplexes, you know, to change a little bit to get within the density so that we fall under that. I mean, it's a suggestion to try to appease everybody and come up with a more harmonious solution to the process.
Greg, once again, for clarification, with the present zoning, they could have how many duplexes?
18 duplexes for a total of 36.
36 units, and they're proposing 31.
31 with a common room, yes.
They're proposing larger setbacks than they would have with the...
And would be required for the duplexes, yes.
Right.
What happens to the 32nd unit? I've been meaning to ask that. Is one unit going to be a mechanical room or something?
One's a common room, so a community room that can be used by any of the tenants. There's also where the garbage is collected.
Basically a community center for the community.
For that?
For that community.
Yes.
And I would say, I was part of the meetings with residents, and it didn't all go great to start with. They had a lot of questions and concerns. And I really believe that the council's intention was to minimize the effect on the neighborhood aesthetically. And as we look through the visuals on it, the duplex versus the fourplex, the possibilities of keeping trees, increasing setbacks, having some control with the CUP. It was my understanding that a lot of those concerns and issues have been appeased. And not that, once again, that they endorsed it, but it was the best option of the two in the mind of not all. And, you know, it's like when we had the meeting on just the DeRozier Drive and not everybody was notified that wasn't on DeRozier Drive. There was no intent to be deceptive. It was like, well, or you draw the lines of the neighborhood, who you invite. And so instead, I felt we acted responsibly in trying to do the right thing with our meetings. We weren't trying to be subversive in high things.
Ben, would you want to read your conditions at the planning commission?
Sure. Recommended condition number one, that the approval of this development is for 31 dwelling units and one common area only. Any proposed increase in these numbers shall be subject to a new conditional use permit request in public area. Two, that the applicant shall have no more than two fourplexes, each fourplex being one principal use within the R2M portion of the property. That's the area within 500 feet of the Mississippi River. Three, that the applicant shall have a survey of the property completed and a final file at the Morrison County Recorder's Office. Number four, that the minimum setback of all dwelling units shall be 50 feet from public roads and 40 feet from all other property lines. Number five, that a minimum vegetative buffer shall be maintained between the dwelling units and all property lines of 25 feet. This buffer requirement should be met by maintaining existing trees as much as possible and where necessary by planting new trees with a minimum height of 6 feet. Vegetative buffer should be maintained indefinitely by the property owner. Any areas of this buffer which become ineffective either due to trees dying or windfall from storms, storms, et cetera, shall be replanted with minimum 6-foot tall trees within 30 days of the landowner being notified by the zoning administrator or by May 31st if the damage occurs during winter months. Number six, that the applicant shall reconfigure the road layout so that there is only one access point allowed on DeRozier Drive to be located approximately 900 feet west of Riverwood Drive and one access point along Riverwood Drive. Number seven, that the applicant shall submit a stormwater management plan to the city engineer for review and approval. The plan shall be approved and implemented prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy for any dwelling unit. Number eight, the garbage recycling collection and mail delivery to allow by the post office shall be at the common area within the development, not within 50 feet of DeRozier Drive or Riverwood Drive. Number nine, that all buildings shall be stick-built, single-story construction. Number 10, that all building exterior shall be of earth color or neutral colors. Number 11, that no accumulation of junk, garbage, noxious matter, or debris may be maintained on the property. All vehicles stored outside in those buildings must have current license and registration and be in a drivable condition. Number 12, that the landowner shall ensure that a full-time caretaker facility resides in an area that will allow for a five-minute response time. Number 13, that the development within the development be rented at market rates. And number 14, in the event additional development occurs to the west and is under the same ownership, the internal road shall be extended into that property such that one access shall be through Evergreen Terrace and the other access shall be at the intersection of DeRozier Drive and Mississippi Boulevard.
Thanks.
So with the duplex, they'll have 36 places to rent? With the fourplex, they'd have 31, is that what I read?
Yes.
Correct, yes.
Current proposals for 31 minutes of value ordinance if they were to plat it, they couldn't have built 36.
Right. So they'd have five more places to rent, actually, if they had duplexes, is what you're saying?
Yes, if they were to...
Yeah, if they were going to do that, they could have.
Would less setback.
I'd like to make a comment just as a resident of that neighborhood, for people that are here. In a perfect world, it would have lots the same size as the other side of the street and single individual family homes, but it's not my property and I don't own it. They have an option of pretty much clearcutting the property and putting in duplexes without asking permission from anybody. They would just have to get approval for the layout of the roads. What they're requesting to do, I realize, is not preferable to a lot of people because it's a larger number of homes that would be there, but it's less than they would be allowed if they did what they can do without our permission. It's in appearance going to be a preferable option to what they would be allowed to do without asking to do this. I think they're trying to be good neighbors.
Where is Evergreen Terrace? I'm pretty familiar with everything. I can't place that.
It's my understanding that's what they would have applied if they were to plat it. Whether it's duplexes or as one parcel would be Evergreen Terrace.
There'd be a road within their development. That would be a road. So, yeah, you probably haven't seen it. Any other discussion? Questions? Hearing none, resolution call roll, please.
Not a resolution.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Those are Boym.
Boym and Wilderin.
We... Second matter?
Did you need anything else or are you good there? You got it?
No, it's on the other two votes, Boym and Wilderin. I just want to make sure I'm right.
Variants of setbacks, Greg and Ginger, find a tech.
Yep, this was an application to construct a deck, part of which would be a covered deck or roof deck, oh, in the boat setback. This is on 12th Street, 10th 12th Street. Minimum setback requirement is 15 feet from a sidewalk line in a corner lot like that. Their existing dwelling is right about that, that's 15 foot mark. So pretty much the total eight-club deck addition would be within that setback. Board of adjustment recommended denial to this on the 53 vote. They noted that the ordinance does allow for a maximum three-foot wide fire escape that could be used to offer some egress and ingress to that door that's on that side of the building. The building, the house that was there, was constructed by a previous owner in the late 1970s. Subback requirement is the same at the time. Does have a letter board in that side of the building. The recommendation was to deny based on the lack of showing the type of difficulty of the property to get at it.
Let's motion the council on the variance. Any motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation. These are the ones where the verbiage gets confusing. Is it yes or no?
Second?
On second.
Motion by Councilman Hanson, second by Alderman Hercock to accept the recommendation of the planning commission. Any discussion?
We're accepting the recommendations, so if we vote yes, it's denied.
Correct.
This is Lawrence Taylor.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes. Yes, we need to know.
No. We're voting yes to accept the blocking condition, deny.
Okay.
I know how you like these, Lawrence.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Variance is denied. Gulf Corps Superintendent, job description update and advertise for position. Greg?
As you know, Randy, our Gulf Corps Superintendent, due to his notice, his last working day was last Friday. So we had in front of you basically an update for the work description as well as a request to post and advertise for the permanent position set forth in the MAF agreement. The job description, basically what we've changed is knowledge and skills are a requirement to be able to know how to work on the mowing equipment. We moved that over to preferable qualifications. So we wanted to focus the new person's responsibilities more on to the business side or inside the clubhouse in terms of making sure that that runs smoothly, knowing that we have qualified staff outside for the groundskeepers. And so tonight, we've been looking at approval to approve the job description and authorize staff to post the Gulf Corps Superintendent position as well.
Let's motion the council, one vote. Second. I'm watching by Mayor Zooka, second by Councilman Hanson. They approved the job description update and advertise the position. Discussion, Laura, you have something?
I did, and I'm just wondering if the council would be so inclined, you could also authorize advertising the inside positions such as a cook waitress and pro shop attendant at the same time under our part-time pay policy. You can authorize advertising those, or if you want to do it in a separate motion, you can do that as well. But if you'd like, you can do it and then we can advertise the whole store.
Want to add it to your...
Yes, I'll add that to my motion.
Second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries in terms of having approval, operates, public works.
As we stated earlier with Randy's last day on the seventeenth, we've identified two individuals within the clubhouse to kind of take on the interim duties, just to kind of get us through here. The two individuals that we've identified are Austin Bjorgi and...
Julie Sledum.
Julie Sledum. And we'd be looking to give them an additional two hours per hour for those two individuals due to the additional workload that they'd be looking at in terms of scheduling, ordering, and making sure that the events that are already planned are, are staffed adequately. So tonight, we'd be looking at approval for the two dollar an hour, as well as naming those two individuals for the additional staffing at the, at the golf course.
And that was until either a full-time superintendent's either the end of the year.
Correct.
And then again, if the council would be so inclined, that if you would also authorize the payment of the food license testing and stuff for Julie Sledum at the same time? Or again, if you want to do that in separate motion, separate duty?
What if I make a motion to approve naming Austin Bjorgi and Julie Sledum, plus reimbursement for the food license for Julie Sledum?
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilman Hanson, and second by Councilman Canawka. Approve the interim staffing and licensing. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Waste water treatment facility report. Short, Elliott, and Hendrickson?
As we heard earlier this evening in the work session, the treatment requirements for the wastewater treatment plants are continuously increasing in terms of what needs to be done before they get discharged. And so we have seen a draft permit for our wastewater treatment facility. It's likely that we'll get those treatment requirements in 2016. Part of that draft permit indicates that we need a, a facility plan for our plant by March thirty-first of 2017. We know that with the, the draft requirements in terms of the, the treatment requirements, we are going to need some, some significant upgrade to our facility in order to meet those requirements. And so this facility report basically looks at all the different options that are out there in order to meet those, those requirements, whether it's upgrading our current facility, relocating that facility, or anything in between. The bulk of our plant was reconstructed in nineteen eighty-five, originally built in nineteen fifty-eight. So a lot of the piping and underground stuff is vintage from nineteen fifty-eight. The other components are from nineteen eighty-five, and so it's, it's been around a while. And so we want to make sure that whatever we do is in the best interest of the city in terms of fiscally. So we, we did get a proposal from Short, Elliott, Hendrickson, in the amount of fifty-six thousand five hundred dollars to complete the facility report for that, for our wastewater treatment plant.
If the requirements are going to change in 2016, how are they going to know what those are to make recommendations this year?
We, we've seen draft permit requirements, and then what we'll also do is actually ask the MPCA. There's a, there's a cost for asking it, but there's, you ask them what the draft requirements are going to be for the next permit as well. Generally, the way that the MPCA works is if this permit, if you have to monitor for something, the next permit, you're going to have to have some limit on that aspect of it. And so you, you can kind of read where the roadmap is going based on what your current plant permit shows. This will help identify us what the best option's going to be for some of those.
Kind of anticipating what their next requirements are.
Yeah.
Are there any other firms that do it that are close to it?
There's quite a few firms that, that do it. I'm comfortable with the work that SEH has done. Obviously, I came from there. I know the, the staff that's, that's worked there. And so I, you know, cherry pick the individuals to make sure that who we get and what we get is going to be the most effective.
I kind of agree with Waifel, that, that fifty-six thousand dollars. I'd like to see a, another bid, see if it's comparable.
Fair enough. What I can, what I can do is I can get prices from other communities on what they've cost. What I don't like doing necessarily is putting out the number that somebody has given and saying, how much is it going to be? Does it, I can guarantee if someone's going to be able to beat it by a hundred bucks, two hundred bucks, whatever it will be. I can give pricing on what the other, other communities of similar size have been in the past, to show that it is comparable to what will be, will be paying.
I think, even for your best interests, that would be a good idea. I, I'm thirteen years removed from my former employer, and I'm still very careful on how I do business with them. So I am going to make a motion that we table this until the next meeting, pending some verification on pricing.
Got a motion by Councilman Hanson to table, do I got a second?
Yes.
Second by Alderman Hercock. So we're table until our first meeting in August?
Ayes, third.
Okay. Ball down the table, right? Sorry, motion by Hanson, second by Hercock. To table, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Tank removal, former Clark station, considered?
We're making progress over at the, the Clark station over there. If you've driven by, you'll notice there are some piles of dirt there waiting for the tanks to be removed. We received pricing for the removal of the tanks, as well as the environmental portion of it. Whenever you remove the tanks out of the ground, the MPCA requires that an environmentalist specialist is on, on staff at the time, testing the soil underneath to take, to see if there's any contamination back there. The quote for the tank removal comes from Langwood Tank Removal at eight thousand one hundred sixty-five dollars. The quote that we have from Landmark, who is, who does the environmental for us, is not to exceed three thousand five hundred twenty-five dollars. So tonight, we'd be looking for approval of those two firms to complete the tank removal at the old Clark station.
What's the wish of the council?
So.
Second. Got a motion by Mayor Zoka, second by Councilman Mulderen. Get approved the tank removal. At the former Clark station. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Well sealing former IGA building, considered? Greg?
Yeah, over at the old Red Owl or IGA building, there's nine test wells that were installed. I don't remember the year, but they were installed a while back ago to monitor the dry cleaning business that once was there. Since the time they've been installed, the MPCA now requires basically an annual fee for four hundred fifty dollars for those wells to be in place. Tonight, we are looking for approval to have Landmark Environmental seal those nine wells in conjunction with their subconsultant at a cost of four thousand nine hundred fifty dollars, so we don't have to continuously pay for the annual seal, or annual monitoring of those, of the wells. I will point out that the MPCA has closed that site in terms of any contamination. There's no concern of that, but we still have those monitoring wells in place, and we'd like to seal them, so we don't have to have that, that fee every year.
What's the wish of the council on sealing the wells?
I make a motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mulderen, second by Alderman Hercock. Approve the well sealing to former IGA, IGA building, not to exceed four thousand nine hundred fifty dollars. Landmark Environmental, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. State council reports on authorities, boards, bureaus, committees. Anybody got anything on that? Any other announcements, anybody?
Oh, I'll, just so it's on the record here with the boards and announcements, we're, last email I got, we're still currently in limbo with our franchise agreement for cable TV. There just hasn't been any new news.
I did receive an email. First, I got a call this morning and received an email from them, and I will forward it to City Hall. I don't know why they called me yet.
You're the man.
I understand that. I just figured that out. So anyway, I'll get that forwarded. She called me and said it had been sent once before, so I'll pass it on to them. They're loading it. And does that go to the cable board or for review, or do you do that as a council?
It, the actual franchise agreement, or it'll go to the cable TV review board, but depending on where it's at, we work with the attorney that, whose name escapes me right at this moment, but they'll probably take a look at it.
I'll send it along to you.
Thank you.
Yep.
You got anything else? No. Eight thirty-one, stand adjourned.
I'm glad you clarified that. Get the rest of the story in.